Okay, so you're flying solo. All right. We could call the meeting to order, have everybody rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Ms. Delahy.
Here.
Ms. Delary.
Here.
Ms. Martin.
Here.
Mr. McHugh. Mia Martin.
Here.
Ms. Dougherty.
Here.
Ms. Fatacante.
Here.
Six present, one absent.
Okay, under the agenda, the first item under the Order of Business is a spotlight on excellence, highlighting some achievements at the Robinson School, and I'd ask Principal Robert Murphy to come forward and tell us a little bit about what he's been doing.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the school committee. It's my pleasure to introduce to you Susan MacLeod, Teacher of the Week in November. She's going to explain why we're here this evening. Ms. MacLeod?
Thank you for allowing us to present to you this evening. In the beginning of the school year, Mr. Murphy asked me to focus on real-world math applications, and I found the stock market game, and my students did extremely well with it, and I would like them to share their experiences with you now.
My name's Jasmine Rodriguez. I'm in the 8th grade at the Robinson School. I participated in the stock market game in Ms. MacLeod's class. We worked in groups of five. Each team member had a role to play. The roles were captain and charter, person who created bar graphs of the stock purchase using a spreadsheet, the economic research coordinator is a person who would check the New York Stock Exchange and the Internet to see who the top movers were and which stocks were making money, the transporter, the chance reporter is the person who bought and sold our team stocks, and lastly, the record keeper, the person who recorded and kept track of all our transactions.
Thank you. Just make sure before you start to speak that the microphone is lower a little bit so it picks up your voice.
My name is Marcus Cordell, and I'm an 8th grade student at the Robinson. I was captain of my team. My role was to keep the team focused and on task. Each team started out with $100,000 in the bank. Our goal was to make our money grow by buying and selling stock over a 10-week period.
My name is Ozzy Estrada, and I'm in the 8th grade at the Robinson School. I was also the captain of my team. The stock market game allowed us to use real-world data to compete in the game. When we buy and sold stock, it was real companies and real stock market pricing. The game also allowed us to understand where profit and loss was, and to decide as a team what companies were making us money and what companies were losing us money. We had to evaluate our account holdings page each week and determine as a team what we were going to do with our stocks.
My name is Ryan McKennedy. I'm in the 5th grade at the Robinson School, and I was also the captain of my team. There were 575 teams in Massachusetts competing in the stock market game. The Robinson School had 15 teams in the top 100 with the highest in 24th place. We competed in teams from public schools as well as private and charter schools. The only disadvantage we thought we had was that our teams only met once a week to make their trades, and other teams in their math classes met daily to make their transactions.
My name is Dilla Miller, and I am in the 8th grade. I was also the captain of my team. Being a participant in the stock market game allowed us to be a part of the Invest Right 700 Word essay contest. The essay question we had to write about was, "You are a successful CEO of an eraser company with, who produces celebrity erasers. Your Johnny Depp line was such a huge success that you now want to expand your business. Are you going to take your company public going through the stock market or keep your company private?" We have to take a stand and decide what we are going to do with our business. We brainstormed as a team, we used graphic organizers, and we researched on the Internet everything we needed to help write this essay. Everything we learned through the stock market game helped us to be creative writers. We are all waiting to hear the final results of the contest.
My name is Jeremy Som, and I am in the 7th grade at the Robinson. My name is Jeremy Som, and I'm in the 7th grade at the Robinson School. My team and I enjoy playing the stock market game. We enjoyed it a lot and learned from this experience. We experienced teamwork cooperation, listening to each other's idea, and we learned what the stock market is all about, the risks associated with it. If Ms. MacLeod does it again with other classes, I hope other students enjoy it as much as we did.
If I could just thank Ms. MacLeod and the students for being here and for the Robinson School for being pioneers in the city of taking the challenge of entering into this particular competition, and to have 15 teams be in the top 100 of nearly 600 teams competing from across the state is really a major accomplishment, because it would be easy to think that maybe one team would be in the top, but to have 15 of the teams at the school score in the top 100 is really a major accomplishment. And we want to applaud your work and your efforts to make math real for students. I think also probably many of us would love to meet with the students after the meeting to learn a little bit more about how your virtual $100,000, how you transformed that. You know, none of us have that much to throw into the kitty, but it would be fun to get the benefit of the advice of some of these team captains here.
Perhaps if we have a surplus at the end of the budget year, we can give it to these folks to invest for us. Thank you all very much, and congratulations on a fine accomplishment. Okay, that concludes the Robinson School presentation. You're welcome to stay with us until the end of the meeting, but feel free to leave at any time as well. We have a second Spotlight on Excellence this evening, the Fall Athletes' Recognition, and for that, I would like to recognize the Lowell High School Athletic Director, Brian Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the school committee, Madam Superintendent. I'm not sure how many of the student athletes are here because a lot of them are playing another sport, but we do have several of them, and I'll do the best I can to make sure I don't miss anyone that got here. And first, I guess I'll go by alphabetical order, by girls then boys, so that I can follow my agenda here. Our first student athlete is Amanda Lahey. Can Amanda come up here? Oh, yeah? Amanda's the first female runner in the history of the Lowell High School cross-country program to be a Globe and Harold All Scholastic. She's also the Lowell Sun Runner of the Year, Team MVP, and we're very, very proud of her. She's going to run in college and be successful at whatever she wants to be in, I'm sure. Runs indoor track and spring track, and I think she deserves an awful lot of credit. Amanda, congratulations. And next is Erin Griffin in field hockey. I did not see Erin when I walked in. You didn't see Erin? No. I think she's playing like indoor something, some sport. Tina Tobin is here. Tina for soccer. Tina Tobin is only a junior, and so she'll be back next year for the same presentation, I'm sure. She is one of the most outstanding soccer players we've ever had at Lowell High School. She was MVC All-Conference Player, led the team in scoring, and we look for big things next year because we graduate 12 seniors this year and had an outstanding freshman group of girls soccer players. So congratulations to Tina, and we'll see you for next year's award, right? Okay. And next is another junior, Sarah Canelis, swimming. Sarah? Sarah is another one of these athletes. She could play three sports, and any sport that she chose, she would be an All-Star. I mean, she's an outstanding gymnast. Decided this year she was going to focus on swimming, and as a junior, was an outstanding swimmer. She was MVC All-Star. She was undefeated in the 50 Free and the 100 Fly. Has, I would say, the best chance of anyone since Jen Burns and Ellen Martin, my daughter, were fly swimmers way back, and we believe that Sarah will break those records next year. She was, how far were you off, Sarah?
Less than a second.
Less than a second as a junior, so we think she's going to do it, and she's outstanding student as well. Sarah Canelis, congratulations. Next is Kristen Doyle. I did not see Kristen, our volleyball captain and MVC All-Conference, another great student athlete. Boys cross-country Norman Charette is here. Norm is an MVC All-Star. He runs all three seasons in cross-country indoor and spring track. He was, I believe, a middle school champion, weren't you, in the 8th grade in the cross-country race?
Didn't have cross-country in my school.
Wrong guy. You should have just said yes. No. In any event, he's an MVC All-Star in the team, Most Valuable Player, and a terrific, he's going to run in college, right, Norm?
Yes.
Which school are you going to go to?
I'm looking at Tufts right now.
Tufts is his first choice. Congratulations. Our next two recipients, Joe Harris and Matt Welch, are football players, but they also play basketball, and they have late practice tonight, so they couldn't join us. But Joe Harris was a Globe All-Scholastic, Harold All-Scholastic, and Player of the Year for the Lowell Sun. Matt Welch was All-Conference. He's all everything, quite frankly, in any sport he wants to play. Joe Harris, we believe is going to go to URI on a full athletic scholarship, and he's one of the senior ROTC members, and both of them are great kids, but they're at practice. Let's see, in my soccer players, I don't believe are here, Felipe Candido, who was in my office at 2:00. Is he here? Oh, jeez, I'm sorry. Come on up here, Felipe. Well, I had your name here. Come on up here. Ramiro, come on up here. We got two out of the three, right? Okay, these are two of the three senior soccer players that had an outstanding season. Felipe Candido was the Player of the Year in the MVC, the Most Valuable Player on the team. I would say, according to the coaches that have run a long time, they say he's the best soccer player that's ever played at Lowell High School. He's got a full scholarship to Holy Cross, is that correct? Holy Cross, and he's all excited about going. Ramiro Palacio is a midfielder, played for the last three years on the varsity. How do you?
Defender.
I can't pronounce your name.
I said defender.
Oh, defender, I'm sorry. Oh, I thought you said midfielder. Midfield and defense. But in any event, three years, this is what they do all day to me in my office.
Why don't you go back to the Holy Cross kid?
Yeah, I was doing pretty good with Felipe, wasn't I? In any event, another three-year varsity player, an MVC All-Star, a terrific kid, and these two, plus Josh Da Silva, really carried the soccer team this year as leaders. They're wonderful players. They did a great job with the freshmen and sophomores when they worked together with all the coaches, and a real tribute to the Lowell High School family. So congratulations. Thank you. And our last group is the crew team. Could I have the girls come up? I don't know how many are here. Are they all lined up? These are state championship Massachusetts girls varsity lightweight eight. They won the gold medal in the crew state championship in Worcester. And I'll introduce them. Crystal Vazina. Becky Walsh, Michelle Toomey, Katie Noah Swett, Lauren Lapointe, Sarah Tessier, Dee Welsh, Maya Munson, and Brittany Ridden. A great group of kids, and we expect another medal in the spring because they race both seasons. They'll be out there in a couple of weeks. Congratulations. And that's it. Thank you very much. I appreciate the time.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Those of you who don't know, I went to Holy Cross as well, so no slight intended from any of the other athletes. So congratulations, all. It continues to impress all of us, I think, the significant accomplishments that are made at Lowell High School, day in and day out, month in and month out, and that also holds true in the field of athletics. So congratulations, all of you. Thanks for coming down here tonight to share some of your accomplishments with us. Thanks very much. Okay. You folks are also welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but do not feel obligated. Probably some of you have homework to do. So next, moving on the agenda, we have, for approval, the minutes of the school committee meeting of December 20, 2006.
Motion to approve by Ms. Fatacante, seconded by Ms. Martin. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, the minutes are approved.
We have several items, I believe, under permission to enter. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, permission to enter into two contracts, one with research for better teaching, $8,400 to amend an existing contract for leadership development for administrators and teachers, funding provided by the school department budget, the Lowell High School Professional Development Funds, and the Silber Grant, and a second contract with Landbark School for $23,126 to amend the existing contract to provide for the out-of-district tuition costs for one additional student and the addition of one student who is enrolled and receiving additional services. Funding provided by the school department budget, the special education tuition account.
What's the wish of the committee? Motion to approve by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Delahy. Roll call, please.
Mr. Delahy.
Yes.
Mr. Delary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mia Martin.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. McHugh.
Here. Yes.
Here, yes. Mia Martin.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Ms. Fatacante.
Here, yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Okay, the next item is memorials. We have six memorials offered by the committee as a whole, including William Bill McDowell, the father of Denise Perrin, McAuliffe School teacher, Thomas Nealan, father of Laney Martin, parent liaison at the Riley School, Agnes Langtang, mother of Marguerite Farley, a Riley School teacher, and Lisa Klobuchar, a paraprofessional at the Moody School, for Irene Rushton, mother of Carol Eli and mother of Susan Rushton, paraprofessionals at the Riley School, for John Holmgren, father-in-law of Bertha Vargas, Riley School teacher, and for Lorraine Mulvey, sister of Bobby Galvin, a retired paraprofessional for the Title One Program, and aunt of Roberta Keefe, Riley School Assistant Principal Kathleen Keefe, Lowell High School teacher, and Megan Keefe, Riley School paraprofessional, and also one offered by Ms. Fatacante, John C. Happy Harrigan, the brother of Patrick Harrigan, a daily school custodian. If we could all rise in a moment of silence in darkened chambers in their memory, please. May they rest in peace. Okay, we have an item under unfinished business concerning the tuition revolving account. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, at the last school committee meeting, committee members, in the discussion about establishing a tuition revolving account for non-resident student tuitions for students who would participate in our special education programs, committee members asked about the implications for school choice, and you have a memorandum in your packet prepared by Assistant Superintendent Lang, which points out that we should, at the appropriate time in April, take a vote to participate in the choice program for the narrow purpose of enrollment in particular special education programs, and that way, we are fully within, complying with every aspect of the law related to the revolving account and school choice. So I appreciate the question being asked, it made us take another close look at the situation. So I'd recommend action on this this evening. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the establishment of the revolving fund by Ms. Fatacante, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. Ms. Martin?
I just have a quick question. In looking at the accompanying table here, there are some that have the specifics in terms of reports and the accounting procedures, and yet, the bulk of them don't. Are they just, are these all going into general funds that the accounting measures and accountability measures are all in place there?
Let me ask Mr. Lang to respond to that question.
Thanks. This particular fund, as long as any of the other revolving funds pretty much designated, would be controlled through the city treasurer and the city auditor's office, so they would become, once established, audited on an annual basis through the regular city audit. There wouldn't be a separate audit for these funds. They'd be considered a regular city revolving account.
Okay, thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Delahy.
Yes.
Mr. Delary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. McHugh.
Yes.
Mia Martin.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Ms. Fatacante.
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Okay, that brings us to the motions. The first motion is by Mr. McHugh, request the headmaster administration provide the school committee with a report on the buyback program at Lowell High School, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. Mr. McHugh?
Yes, just briefly, I understand we have this program at the high school, and I guess I'm looking to get a little bit more information about it, like how long it's been in existence. How successful is it? It's my understanding that students that miss school can basically buy back time and things of that nature, so I'd like to get a better understanding of how that's working, and, you know, what is the success rate? How we find that students are actually utilizing this program, and any other pertinent information we can get would really be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? All those in favor of the motion say aye. Any opposed, the motion is approved. Next motion by Mr. McHugh, request the headmaster administration provide the school committee with a report on the effectiveness of merging the health curriculum and physical education curriculum responsibilities together at Lowell High School, seconded by Ms. Fatacante. Mr. McHugh?
Thank you. I believe it was two to three years ago, we were a very tight budget year, this was something that was actually merger of two jobs were merged at that time due to, say, some funding sources, and I don't think it was the intention to do it forever and ever and ever. So I would like to really get a report to see how that has worked out. You know, it was something I think we needed to do to make the budget number work, and it was something we discussed very, a long time on the floor, but when push came to shove, we actually thought at that time was the best thing to do. I think it's time to revisit it. So I'm really looking to get some information prior to going to our next budget session this coming spring, so I can make an informed decision when we get to that portion of the budget. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anything further? All those in favor of the motion say aye. Any opposed, the motion's approved. Next motion by Mr. Delahy, request that the finance subcommittee convene to discuss the FY08 budget priorities, seconded by Mr. Delary. Mr. Delahy?
Thank you. Motion's quite simple. What I'd like to do is convene a meeting for the finance subcommittee, and we've got a lot to discuss, a lot to do for the next budget, and in speaking with Mr. Lang, he has told us that they do start the budget process in February, but I'd like to get a jump on it with the whole committee, especially the finance committee, and everyone else, obviously, is welcome to attend, but basically, just want to get a good early start on this year's budget. Thank you.
Anything further? All those in favor of the motion say aye. Any opposed, the motion is approved. Next motion by Mr. Delary, request the superintendent provide the school committee with the number of IEPs which were not in compliance with Massachusetts statutory requirements for the first semester of the 2006-2007 school year. In addition, for each IEP not in compliance, superintendent will provide to the school committee a detailed written explanation regarding why the compliance requirements were not successfully met, and with an action plan outlining future prevention measures to assure compliance is achieved, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. Mr. Delary?
Just real quick, I think we put in a significant sum of money against the beginning of the year in the budget, I think over a million in just payroll, to really, to, I guess, address an issue regarding compliance. Just want to see how we are mid-year. I'm pretty confident that we're going to come out, you know, successful, but we need to measure to see if it's working. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dougherty?
I'd just like to add that we've got a couple of motions on for the special ed subcommittee, and we're hoping to do a meeting in early February so that we can report back to the whole committee, not only on this motion, but some of the other motions that have to deal with programmatic issues. But it is something we need to look at. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? All those in favor of the motion say aye. Any opposed, the motion is approved. Under Subcommittee Reports, the first report is from the Curriculum Subcommittee, Report and Approval of the Minutes of the January 10, 2007 meeting by Ms. Martin. Chairperson, Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. The meeting of the Curriculum Instruction Subcommittee on January 10 was attended by a great many people. I think I'll spare us all the list, and as we go through, the names will come up as part of the report. A number of different items were considered at the Subcommittee. First, I'd like to take the first two together, if we could. Two research proposals were presented to the Subcommittee, one from Ms. Anna McTeague, who is going to be doing research based at the Rogers School. Her study is focused on making math content more accessible to English language learners, both with and without disabilities. It is a fairly small study encompassing only six teachers at the school, but we are hoping that she will yield some interesting results and hopefully be able to prompt some additional study, obviously in an area where our school district specifically has real questions and a real need. That proposal was approved by the Subcommittee. The second research proposal was submitted by Joanna Cutting, who is a school psychologist and is working with our Family Literacy Center, and her proposal, her proposed research is using a video-based instruction program, and in addition to performance feedback and role-play, in working with parents of young children, preschool-aged children, to use specific reading strategies. Again, it's going to be working with a fairly limited number. We're talking about less than 50 families, so I think that it's on a somewhat small scale, but I do think also can offer us some really, we hope, instructive and creative ideas for strategies as we work with this specific population. As I said, the Subcommittee approved both of these research proposals. I'd put them forth now for the full committee to approve in the form of a motion.
Okay, motion to adopt the recommendation of the Subcommittee on these two research proposals by Ms. Fatacante, seconded by Mr. Delary. Roll call, please.
Mr. Delahy.
Yes.
Mr. Delary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. McHugh.
Yes.
Mia Martin.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Ms. Fatacante.
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Okay, Ms. Martin, if you want to continue with the report?
Thank you. The second topic that we did cover in the meeting was school improvement planning. This was a result of a motion made by school committee member Jim Delary. I'm looking at Jim Delary's name typed here. And basically, what we had asked the administration to provide us with was really, I think, a snapshot of how the school improvement planning happens across the district. We're able to focus on four specific schools who have had real challenges in the last few years in terms of being deemed underperforming, in terms of the challenges facing them and making their annual yearly progress. So it was certainly very interesting to have these four specific schools, for whom school improvement is so critical, be able to come to the Subcommittee and present to us on the specifics of what's going on in each of the schools. I would like to thank the four principals who did attend, Mr. Richard Rogers from the Merkland, Ms. Jackie Travers from the Stocklosa, Mr. Robert Murphy from the Robinson Middle School, who was just here earlier, and from the... Murphy from the Robinson Middle School, who was just here earlier, and from the Sullivan Middle School, we had Deirdre Haley, the assistant principal, and Stephanie Lowe, who are presenting on behalf of their school. For myself, and I would certainly encourage the other members who were in attendance to comment, but for myself, what I was struck most by was really the continuing attention to assessment and using assessment in very constructive and, I think, specific ways. When we talk about data-driven decision-making, it's something of a buzzword, certainly, but I think that we were able to really see firsthand how our schools are using this data, the abundance, I think, in many ways of testing data, to make on-the-ground, frontline decisions in the way we work with our students with a focus certainly on improvement. So I think that each one of the professionals who reported to us had taken great pains with their presentations. It was very much appreciated, and they really, I think, gave us a great insight into how assessment tools and assessment information is really being used effectively. And for something that we spend so much time and so many resources on, it really is encouraging to see that it is being used in an effective way. Again, I don't know if any other members of the subcommittee would like to comment on that.
Mr. Leary.
And I too want to, I want to thank the four principals, four principals and, I guess, an assistant principal from the Sullivan School that were there to present, and I appreciate it. It really is a good way of, a good way, good time for them to really tell, say exactly what they're doing and how much challenges they're being faced. And not to get into the numerous challenges that they're involved with, I think that, just for example, the Merkland School has about, what, 85% of the students are, need assistance with the student lunch program as far as finances. And I think that's replicated throughout the Stocklosa schools as well. I'm not sure if 85% is the exact number, but that really shows that we need, when we do our budgeting, really to take a look at how we're looking at some other areas like preschool, for example. And I think that's something when we come up in general, how do we go about helping the folks that really need the help the most? And I think that's, that's, it's 85% is a gigantic number. And I could, you know, we could all get into a long dialogue in regards to what we need to do about it, but I think when it comes to budget time, we really need to show where our top priorities are. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Doherty.
Yes, I just want to add one little thing. I think that one of the things that struck me was, you know, we look at the numbers, we look at the data, and sometimes it's discouraging because we don't see the kind of growth we'd like to see. But to have the principals there, speaking from the heart, I really get a sense of their passion and urgency about how they take this job very seriously, and that was encouraging to me, that along with specific plans in place to move those scores up. I think we should do more of that kind of interaction with the people on the frontlines. I felt that it was very helpful to me to hear from the principals and hear what they've got in place. And one of the things that really struck me was the efforts to engage parents more in things like family math night and events that really pull parents in, not only to make them part of the school community, which I think is absolutely essential, but to have them play a role in the curriculum, to let them see, this is how we're teaching math now, and this is how you can help your student at home, which I think is really a key part of the success. So I felt that it was genuinely a good, it was a good effort on their part to come and give us the time. I really appreciated it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Martin.
Thank you. The next topic that we had discussed was the, an update on the intervention programs that are currently in place at the elementary and middle schools. Throughout our district, we're doing both math and reading interventions based on student performance and on the, again, assessment information that allows us to track very specifically students who are struggling with specific standards, specific topic areas, and be able to help them through that process with additional help, whether it be in the classroom or in specific activities that they're doing as part of a special time within the day. As we looked at, and again, we looked at both math and reading, looking at the diagnostic tests that were given in September for the math area, we also, for this first year, instituted the Lowell Public School Diagnostic Test, which is a specific test developed internally that allows us to track performance on the different standards based on grade level and gives teachers, I think, really valuable information as to how their students are performing on specific elements and allows them to be able to track that very effectively. We can also look at the series of, again, benchmark tests that are happening over the course of the year, starting with those first tests in September, looking at follow-up tests happening as soon as it last, oh, actually, two months ago in November, and tracking all through the school year, with final tests in May and June, really allowing us to see specifically what the performance has been, performance improvement for specific groups of students. As we look at, again, throughout, from kindergarten through eighth grade, there are different strategies in place, there are different strategies in place at different schools within the district, and I think that it really has shown that there is a great deal of creativity being placed at this effort to ensure that students are getting extra assistance when they need it, but certainly aren't being inappropriately segregated from their peers, using flexible grouping, using differentiated instruction, and then in those specific cases, using extra time on task to ensure that students are making the required progress. So that was our intervention update. Again, I don't know if anyone has any additional comments.
Ms. Doherty.
Sorry, I just want to add one thing. I think the intervention's a huge, I think it's a huge undertaking that we're trying to do across the district. It's putting a lot of pressure on teachers to provide these focus plans for each student's where their needs are, and I'm especially interested in seeing the end-of-the-year results, that all these benchmark tests will show, hopefully, some real growth for students who've been struggling. And that's something we'll have to wait till the end of spring to find out. But I think it's been a huge undertaking, and I want to just applaud all those administrators and teachers who've been working very hard to do what I think is very important, and that's meet students where their needs are and bring them to the next level. And I think we really have a very concerted effort to be doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Martin.
Thank you. And wrapping up, our final topic for that subcommittee was based on a motion by committee member Kevin McHugh, asking for some follow-up information on our most recent MCAS scores, examining individual student progress, specific to students who have been consistently in our, in our school system over the course of several years. It was a, it was a very lengthy report with all kinds of interesting colored graphs and charts. You know, I have to say, I do think that this could be distilled a little more effectively, and I think that we would all benefit from that. Looking at the, you know, we all, I think, recognize the shortcomings of making this kind of comparison because, again, MCAS really just doesn't lend itself to this kind of inquiry. When you're trying to track student performance and student improvements, MCAS just doesn't provide that kind of information, just by the nature of how it's applied, the years in between, and the fact that the test just isn't the same every year. So it can, you know, give us, I think, some interesting information, but it can't be, certainly, the be-all and end-all in terms of our tracking of individual student progress. Again, as I said, there is a huge amount of information in this, in this report, and actually, not to put you on the spot, Carla, but perhaps you could just give us a, you know, the quick rundown on it. I mean, we've already talked about MCAS in a variety of ways, so any new information?
Sure, just a couple of, a couple of points. I think one of the, one of the findings in looking at youngsters who've been in the system continuously versus youngsters who transfer in, this, this report demonstrated what probably most of us would think of as common sense, but nonetheless, it was important to see it in writing, that students who are continually enrolled in the Lowell Public Schools at all levels had a consistently higher rate of performance on MCAS tests, whether it was fourth graders, middle school youngsters, or high school youngsters. And then a second is that while the bands of performance are very broad, I mean, warning and failing is a broad, a wide range of scores sit you in that category, and the same thing for needs improvement, the same thing for proficient. So taking that into account, the majority of students actually hold their own or go up in the course of their time in looking across. There's an interesting, an interesting issue that there's a higher rate of improvement going from middle school to the high school than elementary to middle school, and there are a number of, I think, competing hypotheses for that that are actually statewide questions being, being asked. One question is whether the 10th grade test itself comparatively is as demanding as the seventh and eighth grade tests in math and ELA is an open question, given statewide the trend that the same youngsters tend to do better in 10th grade than they did in seventh or eighth grade. So one possibility is the test is a different standard, and it's a comparatively somewhat lower standard. Another possibility is that the focus that students have in ninth and 10th grade on a curriculum that is so tightly aligned with the 10th grade test could explain some of that growth. Yet another could be that the, that the population of students, students also changes. And so the students who are here from eighth grade to 10th grade is a different group demographically than the youngsters who are here fourth grade to sixth grade. And that's, for example, you know, many students go to the vocational school from eighth to ninth grade. So all of those, so this, it was a very interesting exercise for us to look at this, given, as you said, Ms. Martin, given the complexities and that MCAS isn't designed to really answer these questions. But it, but it was, it's very useful to, for it to sort of surface those competing explanations for some of this. And over time, with some other data that we have, we may be able to come up with those answers a little bit more clearly. It also invites us, and we have done this, the urban superintendents have asked the Department of Ed to conduct some of these same kinds of studies on a statewide basis to see if the trends, if the trends are consistently similar across the state, whether they apply only to urban districts or whether they also apply to suburban districts and so on. We know that middle school to high school gain is a statewide phenomenon.
Ms. Doherty.
I wonder if I could ask a question that poses the opposite problem, which was, I mean, I noticed also that the eighth to 10th grade, it was like 76.5% maintained or progressed. But what also concerned me was when you looked at math, the fourth to sixth grade students, only 29.3% maintained or progressed. And in, for math, grade six to grade eight, you only had 34.5% who maintained or made progress. Have we thought about why that might be so with the math?
Two, two issues with that, as we're looking at that. One, one part of the explanation, we think, is that this, these tests were given at a point where we were just, we're beginning the implementation of the math initiative. So that, and I think you remember that we phased it in. So the first year, students had, for example, two units of the, in the investigations or the CMP text. The next year, they had those two plus two more.
Right.
And the third year, the full set of units. So, so this was when we were phasing in the improved math program. And so that's one part of what was going on. Another is that we started with much lower scores in math, unlike at elementary level than we did comparatively with, with middle school ELA scores. So that's another part of it. But it, that's, that is a question that we're, we're looking at because we also now have, we now have some data about, for example, reading and some citywide math testing. So we're going to be able to now look year to year in a more systematic way with, with better indicators to see if what we think is happening is that youngsters are making now progress with a fully implemented math program. I mean, we're working hard to implement it better and better, but now it's, we're covering the full range of material now.
Mr. McHugh.
Thank you. I'd like to thank you for the report. I think it, it kind of confirms some of the thoughts we had, and I think what's interesting to hear is that if you stay with the program, the odds of working throughout our program is going to give you a better chance of passing this exam, and student achievement's going to be reached. I think the second thing I'm happy to hear is it's, it seems like it's creating some more dialogue from the administration, because MCAS, I believe, is here to stay, and we have to continue to look at ways to analyze data as well as to continue to put student achievement first. And I think what I'm hearing is it's creating some great dialogue at the administration and probably through the principals and back down to the school buildings, because that's what we have to do. We just can't sit there and say, well, what do we do next? I think that's the intention of something like this study, is to take a lot of data and then make you think about it and say, what comparisons can we, can we make? What information can we take to start to look even a little bit deeper and take us down a different avenue, a different way of looking at information? And I, I think it proved what I wanted to get out of it, but I think it's also, I'm excited to hear that it's opening some other avenues for some exploratory ways to hopefully take our student achievement to the next level. So I'd like to thank the administration for putting this together. I know it took a lot of time, as well as the subcommittee for analyzing it and having a good discussion about it as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Martin.
And I would submit that as a report of progress from that.
Okay. Motion to accept the report as a report of progress by Mr. McHugh, seconded by Ms. Doherty. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the report is accepted. Next Subcommittee Report is a report from the Joint City Council and School Committee Subcommittee on School Building Projects, reported the meeting of January 11, 2006. Mr. McHugh.
Thank you. On January 11th, the school committee and the city councils, a joint effort, have been working on the last part of the project, which is the New Maury School and the Sappisaurus School. Just some brief history, as everyone, I think, understands, is this is the final piece of a study that was done a number of years ago, and I think it's important to note for the folks at home that when they put the study together, they really took their time to say, how can we do this in a, on a needs basis and a methodical way of going through our buildings to complete all the schools and bring equity to all the buildings as far as the students is having access to facilities that are the same, no matter what school you go to in the city of Lowell. So I think that was the basis of the original study. And, and the initial study was great because we took great advantage of a 90% of funding source from the state, so we were getting buildings for 90%, 97% funded by the state, 10% from the city. So that really went well, and as everyone in the city knows, there's a number of new buildings throughout the city. This is the final piece, and I look at it as the final piece of a plan that was well thought out. And we've been going through the project, and it, the state actually delayed a little bit of the funding at one point, which has kind of pushed this project off, and we're at a crossroads at this point. We have to the end of January to make a decision on where we're going with this project, or projects, I guess is the way of phrasing it. So we've been working for, I'd say, over a year on this right now, and it's at the point where we're just about done the 90, we're at 95% design of the building and specifications, and have taken a number of steps to put these projects out to bid. The unique, a unique thing happened a year ago is that the city now has an option to choose two different funding sources from the state, because the old SBA program, which is the School Building Authority, had an old plan which is now over and done, and these projects are grandfathered in under that funding as well as the new funding source on top of it. So we have kind of, I kind of look at it as the best of both worlds. One of the downsides is that the original project was estimated cost a number of years ago have gone up. As we all know, construction costs are going to go up, they're going to continue to go up. So I think it's important to note that we need to make a decision very soon. We have been working together to get this project basically out to bid, and as part of that, with the new rules, I found it very interesting at that being, we got an update that you have to now no longer just bid on a project, you have to be pre-qualified as a contractor to bid on this project. We had 10 general contractors try to get pre-quali, that were pre-qualified or going through that process to potentially bid on these projects, and I think it was like 100 subcontractors. That shows us a lot of interest out there to just continue to build these projects. So I think that will help, hopefully, provide a competitive bidding process, the best price possible. We're still talking about how to do that if we move forward. I think at this point, we're at the crossroads, though, that next Tuesday, we have scheduled a meeting with the city council here on Tuesday night, and the school administration and the city administration are going to be making, I guess, a presentation to all the city councilors, because they're going to have to decide which way we go. And I think the two programs we're looking at is a loan program or a conversion project, or you'll hear more about as we go forward. I think the presentation, not to get into all the details, is going to be kind of just a little bit of background history, how we got to this point. I think the, then more discussion on the funding options that the city has available to itself right now. And then I think also there's efficiencies and cost savings that need to be talked about, because the goal in one case is the Vanum in the Moody would be potentially closed, and those students would go to the new Sappisaurus School. So those buildings have options to either be turned back to the city, which could be sold off as revenue. One case, we talked potentially about moving some administration into the building, reducing some of our costs for administration space. some of our costs for administration space that we use. So, I, I think we're looking at all the tangible parts of this project. So, it's not just purely just building two buildings and saying, "This is what we need to do." I think we need to talk about equity and we need to talk about the conditions of the building. For example, the Vanum School is, I believe, 1850. It's in pretty rough shape. I think the top floor is closed, the roof leaks, there's some real issues, there's no gymnasium, there's no computer labs for the most part, and there's no cafeteria. Yet, you can go probably less than a mile over to the McAuliffe and have a beautiful building with all the things that students need, including a nice library and everything else, a media center and all the other things that other students will have. So, money would have to be spent on the Vanum School, I guess, is one of the questions that part of this proposal you're going to have to look at. So, the city's at the decision point where if they don't move forward, then some capital money is going to have to be outlaid to address some of the problems that are in the two buildings that we're looking at. So, I think I would ask everyone just to tune in next Tuesday. I think you'll see more information about this. And then I think after that, we definitely need a decision by the end of the month because we, we are required to get back to the SBA and let them know what choice we're going to make, or I think we are potentially could be forfeiting that decision. And I'd hate to see that happen. So, there'll be more financial discussions about this going forward. So, I'd give that as a report of progress. Mr. Mayor, unless you'd like to add anything?
No, I, I think, I can just add that the City Council meeting next Tuesday will be devoted to this topic. We're going to move the regular agenda to 5:30 and then the 6:30 time slot will be devoted to this. It's not anticipated that there'd be a vote that night, the vote would be the following week. You know, this will be the first, some members of the City Council are completely engaged in this, those that have been involved with the Subcommittee, others will be getting this information for the, pretty much the first time. So, I think it's a little unfair to ask people to vote on it, you know, on the spot. They're going to need some time to understand and digest and ask questions about this. However, the, the state has imposed a deadline, we think, at the end of January, is that correct? And so, we need to, you know, so the vote will be scheduled the following week, which would still give us time to comply with the deadline. So, so the Council has acted at least to accommodate the scheduling. Any, any further discussion on this topic?
Motion to accept the report as a report of progress by Mr. Leary, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the report is accepted. And Subcommittee Report on the Facility Subcommittee, report and approval of minutes of the January 16, 2007 meeting. Mr. Leahy?
Thank you, Your Honor. Last night, we had a Facility Subcommittee meeting. Present was myself, Mr. Leary, Mr. McHugh, Superintendent, Mr. Lang, Brian Curley, Director of Operations, and Michael Sheen from the Union. The first topic was the New Maury Sappisara School Project. Basically, we just had a follow-up discussion to the January 11th meeting to discuss, to focus on the administration's planned presentation for next week's meeting. So, that was a short discussion, just we wanted to go over what we were going to present next week. Second item on the agenda was crosswalks. This has been, some of my motions have been about some of the crosswalks. We got an update on, on a motion that I put in early, actually late fall, about some crosswalks over by the Pine, Arts Pine School on Boylston Street. We were informed at that time that new crosswalks need to have cutouts. So, they're in compliance with new federal guidelines, I believe. So, I think what we need to do is, is present the proper department with a plan of where we could use some crosswalks. That way, they could plan for the spring to have proper cutouts put in and then crosswalks could be painted for the safety of the kids walking to school. I would like us to see, present a plan to the, with the City Council that it can go to the proper department because this has always been a little, this has always been a pet peeve of mine that we, we never really seem to get the crosswalks done. I know there's a lot of crosswalks within the city and there's a lot of schools and a lot of crosswalks to be done. But I think we really should have a, a program where we go around and make sure that all the crosswalks are properly painted during the school year. So, we discussed that and we'll come up with a, a plan that Mr. Curley can present to the city. Third item was school signage. This was also a motion that I had put in a few times. I requested proper signage for the, on Glenwood and Draper Streets going to the Sullivan School. We had asked that maybe a four-way stop sign could be put in. That was also a motion put in by Councillor Mercia a number of times and it was denied, and that's fine. But we would like to see proper signage, just telling people that there's a school ahead, please slow down. And that, that's needed for the Sullivan School. So, we discussed that and Mr. Lang is working with the proper departments to get that resolved. The fourth item on the agenda was heating issues. Mr. Curley gave us an update on the present, recent, on the recent heating situations in several of our schools, where we've really just had the first snap of cold weather. Naturally, we've got a few problems in some of our schools with the heat. Mr. Curley assured us that the, you know, as soon as there is a problem, there's somebody right on it, we're addressing them. Sometimes you just never know, the heat works fine one day, next day it goes out. But what, also what we'd like to do is, what's in the five-year capital plan is work with the city to make sure that we can address these problems before they become a problem. Once we finish up with our five-year capital plan, we can present that. And for a short amount of money, I think we, we can go in, we can rehab our heaters in our schools, make sure that they're properly functioning. Some schools, we have two boilers. One boiler works, one boiler's not working, but we're really not working on the boilers that aren't functioning now. We're kind of running around putting out fires where we should be proactive in making sure that the, the proper maintenance and that these heaters are working. Because we all got a few calls this week, the heat's gone out in several schools. And it's, it's annoying, it's an annoying problem, basically. The fifth item on the agenda was the recycling program, which we deferred to the next Facility Subcommittee meeting. And the last item on the agenda was the review of the operations and maintenance staffing. Mr. Lang, Mr. Curley presented information related to the current custodial staffing throughout the school system. Additionally, discussed, the discussion centered on the vacant supervisory of custodians, the second shift position, and the action to be considered related to funding this position. This was a motion brought by Mr. Leary for discussion. And last night, we, we had a spirited debate for probably a half an hour or so on the pros and cons of filling this position. So, I'd like to, at that time, we had requested more information from Mr. Lang, but I think tonight, Mr. Leary might want to make a motion.
Mr. Leary?
Just quickly, thank you, Mr. Leahy. We did have a very spirited debate. And I think the, the focus of the debate revolved around a value of a supervisor of custodians. I think not one person on the committee or in the administration or even the union representative who attended the, the meeting would, would suggest that there's not a value of having a supervisor on the second shift of custodians. I think the, the initial thought process, when I put the motion, is when that position became available, we, I was opining at that point that that monies could be spent in an area where we would really want to focus, such as additional funds for the alternative school or preschool busing. Now, being fully cognizant that $60,000 isn't going to fund, even partially fund either one of those programs, it was something that I was thinking in terms of the budget coming up in the middle of, well, we get into the middle of the budget, February through June of '07. Excuse me. But I think right now, with a lot of the issues regarding the heating that we're having, which are significant, and I think at this point, since the monies are already budgeted, that we should, at this point, I'll make a, in form of a motion, put or present this as an interim supervisor of custodians that will be subject to review throughout the budget at the, well, before July of '07. The thought process here, being interim, is that if we do find areas where we want to spend the money, preschool busing, additional monies, alternative schools, what have you, this would be something we could actually look at as part of a source of funding it. Although, we may, at that point in time, suggest, make a decision that the value for this position is paramount, we're not going to eliminate it. But I want to make sure the person or persons who are applying for it are aware that we are in a tight, excuse me, tight budget area, we need to look at all areas of funds. So, I'll put that in form of a motion.
What's, what's the motion?
Motion is to, to fill or the position of custodial supervisor and fill it right now as an interim supervisor.
Okay.
Subject, interim supervisor, subject to review as we go through the budget process.
Motion by Mr. Leary, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. Any further discussion on this? I just have a ques, is this something that's permitted under our union collective bargaining agreement? Mr. Lang, do you know the answer to that?
Yeah, this particular position is a non-affiliated position. It doesn't fall within a union structure.
Okay. Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? Roll call.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McHugh?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Okay. Mr. Leahy, does that conclude?
That concludes the report.
Okay. So, motion to accept the report as a report of progress by Ms. Dougherty, seconded by Mr. Leary. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the report is accepted.
Mr. Mayor, just one, in terms of the heating issue, I know that there was a problem with, I guess, the wrestling locker rooms. And I know that the Assistant Superintendent Jay Lang and Brian Curley and our, our staff in the DPW are currently ordering the appropriate parts to ensure that that locker room is actually working efficiently as well. So, I just want to put that as a, in addition to all the other concerns we had with the, the heating issues we had this week. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. It brings us to reports of the superintendent, Madam Superintendent, a number of items. First is Mary Bajakalupo Forum.
Yes, thank you. Several, a number of members of the school committee were able to attend the October, the Saturday morning, October, Mary Bajakalupo Forum. About 150 parents, teachers, students, and interested citizens enthusiastically supported Dr. Howard's premise that every child can attain educational success, but the schools alone can't make it happen. The follow-up forum will be Monday, January 22nd at 7:00 at the Stocklosa School, when the Citywide Parent Council will be sponsoring Part II of the Mary Bajakalupo Forum, where, where people will be able to work and form action groups, organize around, around particular areas, and develop specific plans for a focus for the follow-up work. So, obviously, all the committee members are invited and the public is invited and urged to join us. It's a, it's a community-wide effort to, to support educational excellence in the city. And I think it will be a very good event.
Okay. Thank you. Motion to accept the report.
Motion to accept, Your Honor?
By Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the report is accepted. Next, the youth inaugural.
Yes. Two, two students at Lowell High School were chosen to attend the then-Governor-elect Deval Patrick's Youth Inaugural Event in Boston. And we're very happy to have Palak Patel and Catherine Durand represent Lowell High School. And you have a report describing some of the efforts, some of the work that both of these young people have done at the high school and in the community. And they were wonderful representatives of the high school at the, at the youth inaugural. And I understand it was a, it was a fine event, that the students from across the state who attended found it very inspiring and, and powerful event.
Motion to accept the report by Ms. Dougherty, seconded by Mr. McHugh. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the report is accepted. Next item is on preschool registration.
Yes, our Parent Information Center has three major, major registration periods in, in the school year. And at this time of year, we're focused on preschool registration. So, any, any child who turns, who's going to be turning four, honor before September 1st, this coming September 1st, is eligible for our preschool program. And the registration period is now, is January 22nd to the 26th at the Parent Information Center. It's been preceded by open houses to introduce families to it at various parts of the city. But with the preschool registration, we'll be in progress. And again, we, we expect a large turnout. And have done, I want to applaud the efforts of the Parent Information Center staff to reach out to communities, to let some, some members of the community who may not be as familiar with the preschool option as others, to let them know the options that are available and to encourage them to, to register. And so, we're hoping that we can, we can raise the proportion of, for example, English lang, students who are English language learners and young people who are, whose families are challenged by poverty to enroll in the preschool because we know it makes a big difference, following up committee member Leary's earlier comments.
Mr. Leary?
Just real quick, I, I don't know if we're preparing the budget. I think we need to take a look at the cost would be if we are going to try to enhance the, or fully fund the preschool. It might not be a reality, but I think it's something we should, at least if we could, look at the numbers to see what they actually are.
Will do.
Thank you.
Okay. Motion to accept the report by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the report is accepted. Next item is the Mary for Merklin Program.
Yes, this is just a, a report I thought committee members would want to see, the, the detail behind the wonderful event. Committee members, I know, know this, but all over the city, in our schools, leading up to Christmas, there are all sorts of projects that students undertake to support other families. And this is particularly a fun one, that's a long tradition at Lowell High School. Used to be called Toys for Tots. It's now Mary for Merklin, focusing on providing gifts, Christmas gifts for youngsters, preschool and kindergarten youngsters at the Merklin School. And this report, prepared by high school staff, really, I think, captures the, the way in which it involves lots of folks. And, and this particular year broke all records for this high school project and, and tied it into the advisory program at Lowell High School even. So, I thought committee members would like to see this detail.
Thank you. Any comments? Motion to accept the report by Ms. Dougherty, seconded by Mr. McHugh. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the report is accepted. Next is the quarterly report on school committee motions.
Yes, four times a year, we provide the committee with an update on the status of all the motions that, that, that have been made. On the third column, it identifies the current status. And the yellow ones indicate ones that, that in our review could be removed from the list as having been, been addressed. And you can see that many of the ones that are, that are not yet addressed are scheduled for, for the February 7th meeting. There is one correction based on last night's Facility Subcommittee meeting, and that is that we should keep motion number 28, the one on recycling, on the list rather than removing it. Because we didn't get to that last night.
Okay. Ms. Dougherty?
Yes, I also would like to ask that we keep motion number 26 on the list. That was a motion I had requesting a report to the Curriculum Subcommittee that looks at the MCAS data by breaking down. I'm really, we haven't got that information yet.
Yes.
I thought the MCAS information we got at the last Subcommittee meeting was excellent.
But not sufficient to address this.
But this is, this is really looking at, trying to separate out our, you know, our students by the groups so that we can see how are our middle-class, you know, white students doing? Because we always use, you know, poverty levels and ELL, things like that, which are legitimate challenges our students face, but to try to really break that out and see how the groups are doing separately, I like to see that information.
Yes, and I, now I notice that that was to have been on this last meeting, but was not done in time, yes.
Okay. Any further questions? Any further questions or discussion? Motion to accept the report by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, the report is accepted. Next is home education. There is a request, I believe.
Yes, a request to authorize education of a child at home, consistent with state regulations.
I hate this.
Okay. Any questions?
Move approval.
Motion to approve by Ms. Fatacante, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. Roll call, please.
Mr. Lahey?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McHugh?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fatacante?
Yes.
Seven yeas.
Seven yeas, the item is approved. And I think the last item is personnel report.
Yes, recommend approval.
Okay. Motion to accept the personnel report by Ms. Dougherty, seconded by Mr. Leary. All those, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed, the report is accepted. Okay, so that brings us, I think, to new business on the agenda. First item, medical delegation. Madam Superintendent.
Yes, you have a memorandum and explanation related to the medical delegation. There's a state requirement through the, through the city health department to authorize, authorize the nursing staff in the city to be, to have authority and authorization to administer medications. Recommend approval.
Move approval, Your Honor.
Motion to approve by Ms. Fatacante, seconded by Mr. Leary. Roll call, please.
Ms. Lahey?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McHugh?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fatacante?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Okay. And the next item concerns the school committee meeting on February 21st. Madam Superintendent.
Yes, the school committee sets its annual calendar with the first and third Wednesdays of the month, and then closer to the, if there's a conflict in those dates with a school vacation or another activity, close, closer to that date, the committee decides whether to postpone the meeting, cancel the meeting or not. And so I'm bringing to the committee's attention that the third February of the month, in, the third Wednesday of the month in February is winter school vacation. We've looked at, from central office perspective, we, there is nothing that we have to bring to the agenda that, that evening, so.
Ms. Dougherty?
I would not want to cancel that meeting, only because we have two other conflicts coming up, the April vacation, we have a meeting which I know we're planning on going out of state that week, and we have to change the meeting for the graduation, I would think. So I would vote to keep the February 21st meeting. I don't know how my colleagues feel about it.
I'm not going.
I'm good.
Okay. So is that a?
We're going to be here in the toy press. So do you want to vote?
Is that a motion to, to keep the meeting as scheduled by Ms. Dougherty, seconded by Ms. Fatacante? Is there a request for a roll call on this? Okay, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed, the, the meeting will remain in effect. And then I think the last item under new business is the 2007, 2008 school year calendar.
Yes, this is the, this is the time of year when the committee adopts a calendar for the following year, following school year. So this is a, this calendar conforms to the current, to the contractual requirements.
Motion to approve the calendar by Ms. Dougherty, seconded by Mr. Leary. Roll call, please.
Mr. Lahey?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McHugh?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fatacante?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Okay, that brings us to convention conference requests. I think there are eight separate requests.
Your Honor?
Nine, I think.
May I?
I'm sorry, nine, yes. Ms. Fatacante?
Just to address the superintendent on request number one, I don't want to call it out, but you had sent us a, a letter that said that this request came in before it was, it was learned that the January 3 meeting was going to be canceled, but in fact, the request didn't come in until the 5th of January, knowing full well that the request to go was prior to the next school committee meeting. And I don't know how many times we have addressed, or at least I have addressed to you, that people need to do this in a timely fashion, because this isn't willy-nilly. It is, they break a leg, it's the insurance. It's, it's, it's huge, and people do not, and maybe, Madam Superintendent, you don't get it, because you keep giving the approval. And then I look at the ROTC, they have requested their conferences for June already. Now, maybe it's a military thing, I don't know, but I appreciate that. But this person should have been told no, because he didn't get the request in on time, even for this meeting, because he went the 11th and 12th, and the request didn't come in until the 5th of, of January. And I don't want anything to happen to our staff, but if it does, I want them to be fully covered and protected. Thank you.
Mr. Leary?
Mayor, through you to the, well, to the whole committee, I looked at each and whatever one of these convention conference requests, and I really would want to take number five separately. I would make a motion that we vote, vote to approve all the items except for number five. We have a separate vote on number five.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Okay, so.
I'll accept number five.
Is there a motion to approve items one through nine? So moved by Ms. Dougherty, seconded by Ms. Fatacante. Roll call, please.
I mean, except.
I'm sorry, one through nine, except number five.
Except for number five.
Except number five, that's the motion, yes.
Okay. Mr. Lahey?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McHugh?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fatacante?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
I just want you to know, Madam Superintendent, that Mr. Lahey's over here whispering, "What about number eight? What about number eight?"
All right. All right, well, it's too late on number eight. So what about number five? Mr. Leary?
I'm gonna, you know, I'm gonna make a motion that we don't approve number five.
I'll second that.
And just a real quick, just to give a reason why, I mean, it's, the number for, the number five, just for the folks, the audience at, at home, and for our large number of people behind us, the Lowell Teacher Academy Mentor Positions requesting permission to go to a teacher, New Teachers Center Symposium in San Jose, California, from February 3rd to February 7th. The cost is $2,500, which would be funded out of the Teacher Academy grant. In and of itself, $2,500, $25, $2,500 is not a significant sum of money. However, in brief, in numerous conversations we've had in different subcommittee meetings or different types of meetings, the point that I'm, I guess I have a problem with the whole mentoring program that we need to address in greater detail before we start sending folks to the West Coast on training programs. And part of that problem, but not the only part that I have, is that we don't have a lot of money in the teaching grant. And I guess that's something that we need to look into a lot further before we send somebody to San Jose, California. So I'm making a motion that we don't approve that at this point, we don't approve it.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Okay. Motion to deny the request on number five by Mr. Leary, seconded by Ms. Fatacante. Roll, Madam Superintendent?
I just want to, just comment, this is, this is grant-funded. The grant has anticipated that there'd be an effort on the part of the, of the, in the program to both give and get information about this, about this program, and two of the days are over a weekend, so it's, it's only, only three, three work days involved in it, fully funded by the grant, and as I indicate, an expectation in securing this three-year, million-and-a-half-dollar grant, that there'd be a modest amount of sharing of information with other, other districts statewide and nationally about this induction program, as well as trying to secure information from programs that are, that are in place in the state and around the country. So, you know, I certainly welcome the opportunity to discuss the program and, and look forward to that conversation. So I'm not advocating, not doing that, but I would advocate that we go forward with the plan where our presentation has been, is, is expected in San Jose at this point.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes, I'd just like to weigh in on this issue. I know we've had some, what's the words, some hurdles in this new program, but I think it's a very important program. I think that Lowell's been on the cutting edge of getting a grant like this and being able to do something that's very important, which is help our new teachers become involved and engaged and committed to teaching our students and want to stay in the Lowell school system, as well as, you know, mentoring them to grow as professional teachers, which we know the quality of instruction is one of the most important things we offer our students as we try to improve their performance and academic achievement. That said, along with what the superintendent has mentioned, that this is grant-funded money, I think that as we look to the leadership of this program to grow and do a better job, these are one, this is one of the ways that this position can fulfill its obligation, by sharing our successes and our challenges with people from other parts of the country who are doing the same thing. So I would be in favor of letting this person go on this conference, and so I'm not going to support the current motion for those reasons. Thank you.
Mr. Leary?
Just real quick, and I, and I, and I support what my colleague's saying in terms of the mentoring program. It's something that has enormous value, and I don't think anybody would question that. I would suggest that next year's budget's going to have, and if I'm incorrect, correct me, please, Madam Superintendent, about $150,000 of this is going to be on our budget. So, and which I think is good at value money, but I think we need to look at this program in great detail and have the committee's input on it. I'm going to vote no, vote yes on denying, I'm confusing myself in my own motion here. I'm going to vote yes in denying the $2,500 to go to San Jose, California. And I, and I don't reject the premise that this is a bad program. I think it's a fantastic program that we need to enhance and really make sure it's running efficiently. I guess I move the question unless someone else has to say something.
Well, Mr. Leary?
Thank you. I just wanted to add that I heard what both my colleagues said, but this is a, I brought this question up to Superintendent before, and when we do have these mentoring programs and, and all these conferences, but it's, I've kind, I've come to realize that we, I don't know, I feel like we're not hiring enough from within, or we don't have enough qualified people, or people don't want to apply for these positions, and I think that's something that needs to be addressed also. I think the programs are worthwhile, the conferences are worthwhile, but we need to share them and have people that want to go to these, hopefully, they would, they need to realize that they need to commit to our school system, too. And when we need leaders and principals and administration, that sometimes I, I'm expecting these people, we've educated them, I'm expecting them to, to come up the, the, climb the ladder, but be here for us also, because we're educating them, and we want good principles, we want principles from Lowell. So I think that needs to be discussed in the future also, but that's something that we, we can all weigh in on later, too. But I would really hope that, you know, we, we get these people to help us and to share their experiences with us, that we send on these conferences, and share what they've learned, and groom people for the future for the Lowell school system. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McHugh?
Yes, just picking up on what Mr. Lahey said, I think it, you know, it'd be important, and it's just an idea, is, as folks like this go, it'd be important for them to come back and give a presentation to us, I mean, and to the people at home. I mean, it's something to think about. I mean, if it's really important for this person to go.
Right.
And they come back and have to put together a presentation to the school committee and to the folks at home, they're sharing the information they got, we get to share it, and folks at home get to see how valued this conference or something of this nature was. So I don't, I don't think I want to put this on this one, but I think in the future, it's something we should maybe talk about as a committee, if there's some value as folks go, we can get some type of information back. And then if it really is important to them, they'll do it. So I think that way we can get our value for our dollar, because I mean, other than reading a brief memo, we're not quite sure exactly of everything that they're going to learn or come away with from this conference. Thank you.
Thank you. If I could just point out, there are at least certain departments in the, in the, on the city side of government, not, that's, I hate to use that term, but it's, I think it's, it's the only one we have at the moment. But, you know, I think conferences can be an important part of professional development, and having people qualified to do their jobs incorporates this. And in that vein, oftentimes, when people travel to a conference or some sort of seminar or symposium, they do submit at least a written report to the city council on what the topics were, what they, what they saw the advantages of the program, and, and what they learned. And so that may have some value to it. I'd leave it to you, Mr. McHugh, maybe that should come back as a motion at some point. But, you know, we have nine of these tonight, to have nine presentations to the school committee might be a little unwieldy, and maybe we take, start with the written reports and pull from those which ones we want to see in person. So that may be, I just offer that as a suggestion, and not in any way weighing in on, on the merits of this particular item. Okay, so the, the motion is to deny request number five. Anyone else on this? Okay, so roll call on the motion.
Mr. Lahey?
Um, no.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
No.
Mr. McHugh?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
No.
Ms. Dougherty?
No.
Ms. Fatacante?
Yes.
Three yeas, four nays, it's defeated.
Okay, so the motion is defeated. Is there a, a motion to approve then, number five? So moved by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. Roll call, please.
To approve number five, okay.
Right.
Mr. Lahey?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
No.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McHugh?
No.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fatacante?
Yes.
Four yeas, three nays, passes.
Okay, so that, I think there's only one other item on the agenda, and that is, members of, professional personnel item, members of the United Teachers of Lowell, request to donate sick leave days to the following teachers, Jane Kulik at Lowell High School, 42 days, and Marcel Lapointe Lowell High School, four days.
Move approval, Your Honor.
Motion to approve by Ms. Fatacante, seconded by Mr. McHugh. Roll call, please.
Mr. Lahey?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McHugh?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fatacante?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Okay, that concludes the agenda. Mr. Lahey?
Thank you. If I may, I just want, I had one quick acknowledgement. We learned that Officer Tim Crowley is being reassigned. He's been the, in charge of the high school for the last two and a half years, so we'd like to say thank you to Tim. He's done a great job at the high school. He's going to be missed, and I'm sure we'll get someone capable, but Tim's really set the, the bar at the high school, and he's going to be missed, and we just want to say thank you to him, and good luck.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Fatakante?
Thank you, Your Honor. He has, Officer Crowley has dedicated many years to the Lowell School Department. In fact, he was on the forefront last week. He wrote a letter to the editor regarding, regarding the color of the shirt issue at one of our schools. He has been to subcommittee meetings, he has stayed long hours, he has gone to young people's homes at night to question why they haven't come to school. This, this man has gone above and beyond the call of his, his uniform. And I know that everybody in this committee appreciates him. Could we, I'd like to put a motion forward, Your Honor, that we send him a letter of thanks.
Okay, motion to so do that, send a letter of thanks to Officer Crowley for his many years of fine service to the Lowell school system by Ms. Fatakante, seconded by Mr. Lahey. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion's approved. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, I'm very pleased to do that. Sergeant Crowley's been a really incredible asset to the school department and the high school and well beyond. He was, he was our first call that we would make, whether it was an issue at the kindergarten in any of our elementary schools, any of our middle schools. He really, he really set, he was incred, he has been incredibly responsive, wise in his council to principals and to central office administrators, and certainly to high school staff. And he's done also a terrific job of supporting the school resource officers in their work across the system. So he's, it's really been, his services have been a gift to the entire system.
And I agree, in the, in the year I've had the privilege to chair this committee, his contribution has been well noticed and well appreciated. So he certainly sets a high bar for his successor.
Yes, definitely.
Okay, I believe that concludes business this evening. Motion to adjourn by Ms. Dougherty, seconded by Ms. Martin. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, we'll stand adjourned.
8:35, okay? Thank you, sir.